Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 4th, 2020 meeting in the Long Meadow School Committee. We are reconvening after being in an executive session. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so at this time. Seeing none, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have correspondence.
Two pieces of correspondence were received on January 24th and were sent as part of an assignment for a United States history class at the high school. A letter dated January 9, 2020 from Jasmine Dixon, Erica Fontaine, Miranda Vaillenga regarding student stress. A letter dated January 8, 2020 from Megan DeRosa regarding her idea to integrate community service into our high school's graduation requirements. We also received an email from Caleb Warland, music teacher at Long Meadow High School regarding two music groups from LHS, Lyrics and the Symphony Orchestra, who were invited to perform at the MMEA All-State Concert Hour on March 5, 2020. Only four groups stay invited to perform, and two of them are from Long Meadow.
Great. We have minutes for approval. Is there a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the January 22nd, 2020 school committee meeting as presented.
Motion. Is there a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? At this time, I would invite any visitors who wish to make comments. Let me clarify right now. This is the regular visitor comment period that's at every school committee meeting. There will also be time for comments during the public hearing on the budget. No worries. Thank you for coming. Any school committee announcements or recognitions? Yes, Kevin?
So just a reminder that the Pops concert at LHS is on Thursday night. Great time to come out and see some great music, listen to some great music.
And combined with the Poetry Out Loud competition as well that night, so, yeah.
The only thing I wanted to say is, and I know we brought up as part of the correspondence, but both to Miranda and to Megan, thank you very much for your letters from the 11th grade civics class. I think this was, we've been talking with the history department now about some pretty ambitious plans they have on the whole civics path, and I think this is where we're seeing the rubber hit the road, as I see Mr. Landers shake his head. I can't see when I put these on to read up close, but I think this was great. And we are paying attention, and these will be forwarded to the proper subcommittee for further development. So thank you to both Miranda and Megan. Any more further? Okay, then business with guests. Dr. O'Shea will provide a brief presentation on the FY21 budget.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to walk through the recommendation again, this time in a public hearing setting. We've, in response to some of the questions from the school committee, the request for further information, we've added some information to tonight's presentation, and there's also some additional information in your packet. For anyone who is here or might be watching at home, please also know that in addition to this slide deck that overviews the budget recommendation, that the full detailed budget documents are posted online. I want to thank the school committee for its support and direction on this, for the reviews that we've gone through at Finance Sub and with the committee back in January, Mr. Mazza for his painstaking efforts to put together what I think is a very responsible budget and one that points us in some important directions, and to the entire administrative team who's here tonight. Thanks for coming out, and they'll be here to answer any questions that require their assistance. So worth kind of starting with sort of the macro level factors that shape our budget. This committee is well aware of the tax ceiling that Long Meadow is grappling with, and I think that this budget is responsive to that, and it hopefully presents a recommendation that is manageable. And we recognize that though, right now, we're not facing the tax ceiling, it is looming, and I think whatever we put together for FY21, we want it to be something that's sustainable over time. So that's our hope. The other thing that has gotten a lot of attention around this table with the school committee and other boards in town is the Student Opportunity Act. This is a major revision to the funding formula for public education in Massachusetts. We had hoped that the Chapter 78 projections would come in more favorably. The governor's budget that was released late last month really didn't turn out to be that way. In fact, we are looking at a Chapter 70 increase only in the neighborhood of, at least according to the governor's budget, of $30 per student. That's about an $82,000 or $83,000 increase over FY20. So the Student Opportunity Act, it's an important step forward in terms of school funding, but at least for FY21, it appears that the major beneficiaries will be gateway cities, urban districts, and other large municipalities. So it is notable that though the Chapter 78 didn't come in break the way we had hoped, we still have to supply the state with a plan of how we will spend the windfall, and I say that somewhat sarcastically. So when we think about our budget targets, this is something we reviewed at the budget recommendation meeting back in January. We hope that this budget is reflective of primarily above all and else, student safety and student support. We hope that it is responsive to enrollment changes. We hope that it moves us towards a broader renewed vision of student success, something that we've talked about regularly this year with the administrative team, with the school committee, with community groups, is how can we ensure that we are approaching success in broad ways that work for all students? There are important district goals that this will address, which we'll talk about shortly. Mentioned earlier that we hope that this is cost-effective and sustainable over time, and that it is attentive to class size. I'll say from the get-go that this community, this administrative team, myself, that we've long had a strong commitment to favorable class size, and my hope is that the budget that we put together will help us maintain that commitment, and we can dive into some of the numbers shortly. So some of the district goals that I've sort of paraphrased on the left side of this slide relates to ensuring safe learning environments, ensuring that we are being culturally responsive, that we're responding to the individual identities of all learners, and that we are working towards advancing tiered systems of support. Quick side note, the several members of the administrative team over the last couple of days attended a two-day conference down at the Sheraton sponsored by the Department of Education, and it was around multi-tiered systems of support, and it was one of the finest PD experiences, I think, that we've collectively had in some time. So we hope to talk to you more about that in the weeks, months, and probably years ahead. So these are some of the important areas that this budget will invest in. Some of these are budget neutral, some of these are simply programmatic. I've described this budget to staff as a slightly above-level service budget. We're able to make some targeted investments, but fortunately, we are coming back in good shape next year. There are, unfortunately, a lot of communities are having much different budget discussions, but I think we'll be able to maintain the commitments that we've made to students and families over the years. The top tier, the top line there is a commitment to bolster nursing services in the district with the addition of a licensed practical nurse that would be stationed here at the high school, that we think would provide some important support across the entire district. You know, just as students' academic needs have increased in recent years, their health-related needs have increased as well. So we want to make sure we're addressing that side of student well-being as well. I want to commend Tom Landers, high school staff, for making a concerted effort in the coming year to provide very targeted Tier 2 interventions to students. Certainly, there's a foundation of practice already in place in terms of making sure students are meeting with success, but this would be more of a targeted effort to identify, particularly ninth graders, maybe 10th graders, who have some specific learning deficits. There is an existing, this third bullet is not an addition to the budget, but it is going to be reflected in the budget, and that is a transitional support room at Long Meadow High School. This is for students who perhaps have been out of school for school avoidance reasons, or for health reasons, medical reasons, mental health reasons. So the high school staff has been very flexible in terms of creating that as a safety net for students at the high school. At Center School, this year, mid-year, we introduced a program to support students with autism diagnosis, and so though the program is up and running this year, it needs to be reflected in the FY21 budget. So I'm proud to say now that we have strong programs to serve students with an autism diagnosis in all three of our elementary schools now, and it's been an important factor in ensuring that we are being inclusive and educating students in their, not only their hometown, but in their neighborhood school. So it's been a, you know, positive effort, a strong effort by the administrative team, by teachers, and we appreciate the support of the school committee on that as well. So one of the budget factors, and you'll see this reflected in a slide later on, one of the things we are expecting to experience is a reduction in Title I grant. This is a federal grant, based on certain demographic factors, student poverty being one of those. We learned not too long ago that we're expecting a $135,000 decrease in the Title I grant. We won't know that with certainty, probably until the summer, but it is something that had to be accounted for in the FY21 budget. Despite that reduction, we are committed to student support, teachers that are in place right now with Title I funding. Our principals are here, they can talk a little bit more about those student support specialists if necessary. Nick George is our technology director. Credit to Nick for putting this on our radar screen and making sure that we are making critical investments in cybersecurity. The IT budget is in the school budget, so some of the funds that are directed towards cybersecurity will provide needed support across all town agencies. So this would be for malware or backup software, and certainly Nick can explain that in greater detail if necessary. And then finally, I wanted to note that we will be directing some Title IV professional development funds towards an equity and diversity audit, not just in this year, but also next year. And so that's something that we hope to bring the committee up to speed on in the weeks ahead, and the community will hear more about that as well. But I think it's an important targeted use of those Title IV funds. The nursing services, there's some additional detail for you. We feel like that investment is necessary, obviously, to support students and our dedicated nurses, but we also had received a notification from MassDPH back in June of 19 that we were not within expected DPH guidelines in terms of nurse-to-student ratios. One of the other targets that we're hoping to hit with this budget is pushing us towards that broader vision of student success that we've discussed, and certainly this is reflective of written school committee goals, of articulated district improvement goals, and really essentially, it's based on the notion that we want to provide more and varied opportunities for students to learn based on their unique abilities, their unique interests, their unique identities. So some of the allocations that are reflective of this, one of the things we're excited about is the development of a career coordinator at LHS, and as we're on that bullet, I just want to move to the next slide. I think this is, again, a foundation of practice already in place where students have opportunities to develop important career skills, but this would be a more targeted approach to ensure that we're kind of addressing the spectrum of career development education that I know our students will benefit from. The hope is that this would support the development of the internship program that Mr. Landers has talked to you about, that it would support the kind of realization of the vision of the graduate, and making sure that we're giving kids opportunities to develop those sort of soft skill competencies that are reflected in the vision of the graduate. So that, I think, is an important opportunity for us in the FY21 budget. I will note that this position is tied to a reduction of another position at the high school, which I'll talk about shortly, but it is sort of, at least as far as the high school site, it is budget neutral. There's a position in a pupil adjustment classroom that is where there's a retirement, and we're going to take advantage of that to reallocate funds towards career development. So the other thing that is worth noting here is Nicole Allen, principal at Gunbrook, and Neil Guile, principal at Williams, have begun discussions with their sixth-grade staff on how to introduce STEAM-based programming to students at that grade level. Again, this is a sort of a budget-neutral, is a budget-neutral opportunity for us, but we think that it's an important way, again, to give kids opportunities to explore their interests and abilities in, you know, through multidisciplinary STEAM-based projects. You'll see in the budget allocation, two-sided spreadsheet that I'll show you shortly, is the investment in library services at Wolf Swamp. We feel that in the last couple of years, that important library standards have not been appropriately addressed at Wolf Swamp, partly because of the turnover that we've seen in that position, partly because it's a part-time position. And what this budget will allow us to do is to have full-time librarians at each of our three elementary schools. And so with this investment, we think that we'll be able to introduce some project-based approaches to library services. So it's exciting. We have begun discussions with our libraries on this, but certainly the library standards really lend themselves to those multidisciplinary approaches, those approaches that involve inquiry, research processes, information literacy, et cetera, et cetera. And while we're here, worth noting that the push that is happening at the middle school in terms of introducing standards-based teaching and learning, we have an active standing committee that is working on that, in that area eagerly, and we think that it can build on the success that we've seen at the elementary level in terms of encouraging standards-based teaching and learning. So again, not necessarily a, there's no specific position tied to that, but it would be reflected in some of the professional development decisions that we make in the coming year. And then we talked at a recent meeting with the committee about our opportunity to participate in a innovative science assessment at the fifth and eighth grade that would take the place of some of the MCAS assessment at those two grades. So we're eagerly involved in that DESI pilot, and we'll learn more certainly in the weeks ahead. So again, this sort of captures, this slide, I think captures the idea that there's some directions that we are able to go with the FY21 budget that will push us towards that broad vision of student success, opportunities for students to explore their passions, explore their interests, to be in charge of their own learning. And I think that each of the boxes on the outside of this slide represent opportunities for kids to demonstrate their learning in ways that are reflective of their abilities, their interests, and important state standards. So definitely worth noting, and frankly, when I talk to the staff about the upcoming budget, one of their primary concerns, and one of the concerns that I've heard from just a handful of community members, is that we are being responsive to enrollment shifts, and that we are ensuring that we kind of maintain that commitment to favorable, optimal class size, and I think this budget will allow us to do that. I'll show some enrollment figures shortly, but right now, we have a position allocated in the budget for an elementary classroom position. It is in the detailed budget documents. It is reflected in the third grade at Blueberry. That is one of the sort of grade levels that are on our watch list right now, and, you know, elementary enrollment is always kind of a moving target. It ebbs and flows from January to the time we open, but we think that that third grade cohort at Blueberry is important for us to keep our eyes on. We also have a large cohort of rising third graders at center, and rising fifth graders at center as well. I think that if, so we have one additional elementary position in this budget, if we needed to respond to other enrollment shifts, if we needed to add additional staffing at other grade levels to make sure we have good class size, that's when we turn back to Mr. Mazza to identify ways to absorb it within the budget that is ultimately voted. So I have confidence that we're creating a budget that will allow us to maintain that commitment that this community has seen and expects around class size. It's obviously an important factor in student learning. There's, our teachers make great efforts to differentiate. Our teachers make great efforts to individualize instruction, and when class size is manageable and favorable, obviously, that happens in better ways. So we'll come back to some of the numbers shortly, but I know that's a primary concern of this committee, primary concern of our teachers and our administrators as well, and certainly our parents. So we think that this budget will allow us to maintain that commitment. Appropriate staffing to serve English language learners. You'll see that there is a, when we get to the detailed slide here, you'll see that there is a reduction in staffing associated with English language learning instruction, but again, that's a reduction that's already in place based on decreased needs, and it just needs to be reflected in the FY21 budget. Preschool expansion, working with outside agencies. We know that there are rising preschoolers who will need specialized instruction, and Jean Fontaine is here, and if you have any questions on that, she certainly could answer them, but we know that we will need an additional preschool section in the coming year to address the needs of the students that we've identified out in the community who will need that type of support, and the staffing plan is reflected in the budget that you see. Quick note on seventh grade staffing at Williams Middle School, just sort of in broad strokes, if we were to try to maintain seventh grade at five sections, we'd be looking at five sections of 26 students, roughly. This budget has funding to bring down class size at the seventh grade. Now, how exactly that's going to happen will depend on a number of different factors. It depends on the signups that we will have yet to see in foreign language, the signups that we've yet to see in math at seventh grade at Williams. So we have to see how those signups shake out and how it breaks out, but I would just assure the committee, the community, that this budget will allow us to bring that 26 number down to a more reasonable number at the seventh grade at Williams. So quick notes on class size. I know the committee has reviewed this information previously, but maybe some members in the community haven't. This is a snapshot of our current enrollment. You can draw your own conclusions. I think when our staff looks at this, when our administrative team looks at this, they see different things, but certainly it's notable that we will have 256 students graduating in June, and we have in January 2020, 180K students. So that's a pretty significant swing. The reason it's notable, frankly, is because of Chapter 78, and our chances to see an increase in Chapter 78 really diminishes when you have even an enrollment drop of one student. So in the coming year, part of the reason that we didn't enjoy the Chapter 70 bump, maybe that other districts received, is partly because of the enrollment patterns that we've seen. So This is Blueberry Hill this year, and projected for next year, I want to sort of draw attention to that to that rising third-grade cohort. That's a number that we're concerned about. That's a number that the budget addresses. So in this slide, we're not showing the additional fourth section because we want to track that enrollment in that cohort over time to see what happens. You know, it's likely that we, it's very likely that we will add that fourth section that's provided for in the budget. But I've seen situations where there's been unenrollments in a cohort, and then that need to add that additional section no longer exists. So it's definitely worth calling attention to that. Same thing at Center School, third grade. Again, this budget provides for a position to deal with the class size patterns we're seeing at the elementary level. I'm confident, however, that we would be able to absorb an additional section if need be, if the enrollment patterns stay the way they are. You'll recall, in the last couple of years anyways, we've had to add sections in the summertime because of registrations that started to spike in the spring and the summer. So we'll be prepared to address that. We'll be prepared to bring those numbers in line with what we have historically seen. Wolf Swamp, a little more wiggle room there in terms of absorbing any additional enrollment or additional registrations. This is a slide that I only added, actually, to the slide deck today. I typically like to get this to the committee in advance, but it's something that we can review fairly quickly. But I thought it was just interesting to look at the five-year average class size that we've seen at each of our three elementary schools, and then what the average has been at each grade span over those five years. So you'll see, you know, really that there's a strong commitment, there has been a strong commitment through school budgets, through our staffing plans, to maintain favorable class size. And our hope would be that we can remain committed to the pattern that we're seeing And I can come back to any of these slides if you want. So this is really the, you know, the highest-level nuts-and-bolts slide that we can provide you. Essentially, the recommendation would seek an $874,000 request from the town for the general fund revenue to the schools. It is, it's an ambitious ask, but I think it's a, hopefully, one that is reasonable and manageable. And we can show you where that $874,000, how that stacks up to general fund increases that we've seen in recent years. You'll note that we're expecting a decrease in special revenue. This is essentially federal and state grants. Most of that decrease is associated with the Title I reduction that I described earlier. So the net on that is that we are recommending a budget that would be $706,000 above current spending levels, the FY20 budget. This slide, I'll leave it up for a second just so you can kind of absorb it. We hope this is responsive to the discussion that we had the last time you looked at the budget. I think the hope was that you could see how that general fund increase, how it was reflected in terms of the percentage increase, and then what the percentage change in our overall budget has been. So for FY21, the overall budget to Long Meadow Public Schools would increase by 1.89%, but the general fund increase would be higher, two point, almost two and a half percent above the FY20 request. When we break down the budget by revenue source, you'll see that we are largely dependent on the general fund, not unusual for Massachusetts Public School District. We're very appreciative that the town of Long Meadow spends well beyond what is minimally required by the state. The state has a foundation budget that is supposed to reflect what is minimally needed to educate a child in the state of Massachusetts. Not many communities find that to be an acceptable threshold. Long Meadow certainly hasn't, and so Long Meadow contributes well above and beyond what is minimally expected by the state. And you'll see some of the other grants that we are fortunate to receive, but in our important parts of our operating revenue. Again, this slide was added in response to some of the questions that the school committee had back in late January. It is to show how our overall FTE levels, FTEs, is FTE standing for Full-Time Equivalent. So showing you that this budget would propose that we have 455.466 full-time equivalent employees in the Long Meadow Public School District. And you'll see how that relates to staffing levels in more recent years. We can dive into the details of the changes in FTE levels from 17 to 18, 18 to 19. I will say that much of the increase that you'll see here relates to programming that we've added to support some of our neediest learners, students that were previously educated out of district. And so we've made a commitment to building inclusive special education programs in district, and it's been a positive, it's had a positive effect, obviously, on children, but it's had a positive effect on our budget as well. But that's part of the explanation for the FTE levels that you're seeing as it progresses from 17 to 18 and so on. And we can provide more detailed explanation of that if needed. And then, so this is maybe where the rubber really hits the road. You'll see on the left side, some of the reductions that we are anticipating in the FY21 budget. Attrition, top left, refers to, that relates to savings associated with employees who are retiring. And so as they retire at a higher pay rate, typically, not purposely, but typically, they're replaced with teachers who are lower on the salary schedule. And so there's some savings that are helpful to us in terms of, you know, creating a sustainable budget for next year. You'll see that Center School kindergarten assistant will be down a section at Center School in kindergarten, so there's a paraprofessional position that supports that classroom that would no longer be needed as we go from four sections to three. The ELL FTE reduction, I mentioned earlier that that's a reduction that's already taken place. It's already happened, but we need to reflect it in the FY21 budget. And you'll see the Williams Middle School 1.0 FTE. Again, we're not sure exactly how that will serve to create reasonable class size at Williams, but we feel like the budget provides for that as a, the reduction relates to the sixth-grade position that's coming off the books, and then we would add to staffing at the seventh-grade level. I want to call attention on the top right. Our contractual obligations alone to all units, this is cost of living increases, step increases, and lane changes, is over $900,000. So that alone is obviously a major budget factor that we have to account for. That our annual contractual obligation increase is somewhere in that neighborhood most years. So that's an important factor for us going forward to make sure that we can meet those obligations to staff. And then, again, special education, the link positions that you see there, again, those are already up and running, but we need to reflect those. Those are investments that we made mid-year this year, but they need to be reflected properly in the FY21 budget. The career counselor position, we've allocated $65,000 for that at the high school. That is tied into a reduction on the left-hand side. You'll see the high school specialist teaching position. So those two are sort of linked together. We have an elementary teaching position, as we mentioned. The .5 library investment will allow us to have full-time librarians at each of our elementary schools. Preschool staffing, talked about that, to address the needs of rising preschoolers. The investment in nursing services, seventh-grade staffing, and then some miscellaneous increases. One of the things that I often, both as a caution and sometimes as a note of hope, is that the budget really is kind of always taking shape, you know, as we get closer to the school year, as we get closer to the fiscal year, costs become clearer, the revenue picture becomes clearer, enrollment patterns become clearer. At this point, we are trying to identify sort of the overall budget that we will need to serve students appropriately in the coming year. So there's a long road in front of us still. Public hearing tonight, school committee will review the budget and potentially vote on it again next week. And then, at that point, we begin conversations, we increase our conversations with the town. Tentatively, we've scheduled a chance to work, sit with the select board on the 18th. Select board will likely vote the budget in March, and then there's the town meeting. And so it really isn't, doesn't get locked in until the town meeting. And even after that point, there are unanticipated savings, there are unanticipated costs that we have to absorb or account for as we get closer to the coming school year. So Tom does a great job of managing the funds. He's a great steward of the budget that the school committee provides and always does a nice job of ensuring that we can deal with the unexpected and really does a great job of forecasting future costs, forecasting future revenue. So, again, I appreciate everything he's done in that area. And real quick, you know, this is just such a great affirmation of the incredible work that happens in this community because of the partnership between parents and teachers and administrators, the school committee. It is one of the finest districts in the state of Massachusetts, and we have so much to be proud of. Every day, there's incredibly talented teachers working with motivated kids who come from great families and are producing great results. So this is from niche.com, and they compile a whole bunch of educational statistics to arrive at those results. And so at the state level and nationally even, we fare incredibly well. So a lot to be proud of. So, that's it. I know we have to open it up to the public for questions and...
I will now call the public hearing to order. Anybody wish to come speak, come to the microphone and ask your question?
I have a question for the comment.
That's fine, it's totally perfect, yeah. Just state your name and your address, please, and we'll try and make this as friendly as possible.
I'm Heather Goldstein, 242 Pine Wood Drive. I just want to thank everybody here, all the school committee members, for all that you do in serving our children here in Long Meadow. It's a thankless job, and many, I know many of you do this in addition to your day job, so just please know how appreciated you all are. I have been an elementary educator for 16 years. In the past 16 years, I have not had a larger class than 21 students. I currently teach 19 third graders. As a teacher, my primary focus is to make a connection with my students, each and every one. It is my job to know my students, not just to know how well they score on a test, but to really connect with them so they feel safe in my classroom and the community that we build together. My oldest son is a second grader at Blueberry Hill School. He currently has 25 students in his class. While I understand that not all of the students are there for the entire day for various reasons, there are times of the day where all of these students are present. In addition to the 25 students, there are some adults, and when all students are present, I believe that there are 29 people in the classroom. At the last school committee meeting, Dr. O'Shea shared that the number of students with 504s are increasing across the country. I can testify to that in my own school district. In my experience, the classroom teacher is mostly responsible for the accommodations on a 504. These accommodations may be things like pre-teaching, check-ins, modified assignments, checklists, and so much more. Add to this the students who require various interventions, those who need enrichment, and don't forget about the students with a wide variety of various social, emotional, or behavioral needs. Every time a child is added to a class, something is being taken away from another child. There is only so much one teacher can do. We decided to raise our family in this community because of the amazing experience that I had growing up here and the incredible education that Long Meadow has to offer. As a parent and educator, I am pleased to know that class size is being looked at, and I encourage you to support adding additional sections in any way possible so we can set all of our children up for success and allow them the individualized instruction that they all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That, I can tell you, as we went through the budget, through finance subcommittee as well as the committee as a whole, class size is definitely at the forefront of what we're looking at. Input from the cabinet, I don't know, is that an anachronism, calling it the cabinet?
Sure.
But the administration, you know, and I was having a long conversation with a principal today on this about when the class sizes expand, not only does it affect the children who are the most vulnerable, it also affects the children who might need some stretch assignments as well, right? So you're not able to meet both ends, and you're split in the middle. So I really appreciate your comments and for getting up there and making them, and we do take them to heart, so thank you.
And Amy has been wonderful, you know, and she knows all my...
She is wonderful.
The second grade teachers are wonderful too.
Yes, yes.
It's definitely a collective effort.
Ditto. Yeah.
Great. Are there any further comments?
Mike, can I ask just a couple of questions?
I have on the slides. Am I allowed to?
We'll be talking about the budget next week. Right now, it's public comments.
Yep, it is public. It's just for public consumption.
Okay.
It's on here. General questions. So just, could you just break down, just because I know if I was somebody in the public and maybe hadn't been through the detail, this particular one, the FTE, just let everyone know what each of those represent? Just, we just have general ones on there. Can you just give like a general, like professional salary, professional versus other salaries, and just so they know what all those represent, so why one would be going up and going down? I think we gave it a general, and I think we know, but can you just kind of which grouped in each of those?
Sure. Professional salaries would basically, would be made up of, I think, staffing that have a license, a Department of Education license. So administrators, instructional, classroom staff, counselors, positions of that nature. Clerical staff, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, is staff located in a support role in the office. And then other salaries would be support personnel, both in the classroom, so classroom aides specifically, but custodians, and then specialists. So your OT and PT assistants, your BCBA's, I might have forgotten Jean, anybody else, would be in the other salary category.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, just so everybody knows where we're at. And I think Dr. O'Shea kind of mentioned it in generality, but I think these were just broken up, so somebody on, just looking at the slide, you know, on TV or whatnot, make a question, kind of where is it and why is it increasing there?
It should be, yeah, adding the...
It could be, yeah, adding the programs to support students at the elementary level, the Drug-Free Communities Grant. We added, through that grant, we were able to add Paul McNeil as our DFC coordinator. Whenever we add kindergarten sections, we're adding a K teacher and a paraprofessional as well, so. And then, there's, there's been some offsets to those as well, but it really, it represents, as I think about that, it represents trying to make sure that we have those, the continuum of supports, the continuum of services for all kids.
Yes.
So are there any further public comments? Please approach. State your name and address for the record.
Sure, Jeff Clot, 1702 Long Meadow Street. When Marty, I'm sorry, when Dr. O'Shea was discussing his allocation for the preschool, he said that Ms. Fontaine could expound a bit on the composition of the students. I understand there's a component of the town, there are special needs students who we need to provide preschool for, and the town chooses to provide an inclusive approach to doing so and brings in other students. If you review the preschool expenses over the past five years or so, like 2015 through 2019, legal expenses have exceeded revenue from those students who are being included to be inclusive, as opposed to those students that we need to provide the services for, by over $750,000. That doesn't include staff, that doesn't include supplies, that doesn't include general overhead administrative costs. The preschool is something that I don't want people to think is solely providing what's required. It's going above and beyond, to the tune of over $750,000 from 2015 to 2019. This year, fortunately, there's a $77,000 budgetary return because the obligations due to prior legal settlements have been fulfilled. But historically, there's been significant legal expenses associated with preschool, and I was hoping that Ms. Fontaine could talk to the composition, and then perhaps we could understand what those expenses were and why now we're not going to be concerned about them.
I mean, if Jean or Tom are in a position, but I would be concerned about the sensitive nature of the, some of the...
Yeah.
What we're talking about, and potentially it's something we could take under review and then address at the, at the next meeting, like, but there may be some preliminary answers that we have, yeah.
We've had no legal expenses for the preschool, so I'm not sure where that information is coming from.
Coming right off the budget documents that are no longer available off the...
So if it says PS, that's pupil services, not preschool, so I don't know if you're confused there.
Bingo.
So pupil services, which is an $11 million section of our budget, has legal expenses which have decreased, but we've had no legal expenses around the preschool. That's the answer to your question. Your work, please.
Are there any further comments from the public? Seeing none, I call the public hearing closed. Thank you very much for coming and your participation tonight. Really do appreciate everybody showing up. The school committee will be taking up the vote on the budget next week, more debate with the school committee. So join us for next week, and there's always the public comment before the meeting next week if you have a public comment to make as well. So thank you. So, we are going to move to new business, the makeup day for Glenbrook Middle School. Glenbrook Middle School experienced one additional school closure day, October 17th, 2019, and the other five district schools. Dr. O'Shea is seeking the school committee's approval of the memorandum of agreement. This is Dr. O'Shea.
So, we have a, as Chairman Ray mentioned, the need to make up a, an addition, a day at Glenbrook, a day of instruction that was lost to a power outage. It was the only school that day that was offline. And so, our choices are to tack a day on at the end of the instructional year to the Glenbrook calendar, or try to find a way to creatively tuck it into the existing calendar. The Department of Education does not allow schools to add on hours to make up the day in an incremental way. In other words, you can't add 15 minutes here and there, and there, you can't add 15 minutes, you know, whatever number of times it would take to get to six and a half hours. So, the option that we've used in the past when we had some HVAC issues at Center and flooding at Wolf Swamp is to take a professional development day and include a half-day of instruction on that day. So, March 13th is a professional development day. The proposal would be to have a half-day of instruction and a half-day of professional development, and that would get Glenbrook students to the 180-day requirement that the state has for all students. So, we have been in discussion with the LEA to try to reach an agreement that would cover that, and the committee had an opportunity to review that during executive session today.
Great. There's a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement with the Long Meadow Education Association regarding the makeup of Cancelled School Day at Glenbrook Middle School on October 17th, 2019, as presented, and authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Can you amend that motion to say "as amended" instead of "as presented" for those grammatical errors?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a vote. All in favor? All right, approved. I would, I would recommend a motion for adjournment, or entertain.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for joining us. See us next week.
Thank you.